I am in charge of the prayer tonight, and after the prayer, we will have the pledge of allegiance will be led by Jimmy Hazelwood of the North Boulevard Church of Christ, Troop 456. Could everyone please bow their heads and join me in a moment of silence? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting on February the 9th, 2012. Jimmy, thank you for the lead us in the pledge, and I'd like to point out that Jimmy is here with his dad, Randall, and Randall was a committee member. Randall, thanks for being here tonight, and Jimmy is here working on his communication merit badge. Thank you, Jimmy, for being here. Council members, the first item on our agenda is our consent agenda. You have a copy of it in your packet. If there's anything on the consent agenda you would like to discuss or pull off, we can do that at this time. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Call the row, please.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next is the minutes of the meeting that was held on January the 26th, 2012. That was a regular meeting. There's additions or deletions to the minutes. We will entertain that. If not, we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, consider for passage on third and final reading, an ordinance to rezone approximately .4 acres at 331 East Main Street to single-family residential 10, RS 10 District, and historic HI overlay. Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, consider for passage on third and final reading, an ordinance amended Chapter 4 of the Murfreesboro City Code relative to wholesale liquor. Second. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. We have a motion and a second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, pursuant to Resolution 12-OZ-R-02, adopted by the City Council on January the 12th, 2012, we are to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning of approximately three acres along Alexandria Drive and Florence Road from Office General OG District to Highway Commercial CH District. Howard Spain is the applicant. A notice of the said public hearing was published in the January the 22nd, 2012 issue of the local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Ely.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Bratcher and council members. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to rezone approximately three acres from OG, General Office District Residential, to CH, Highway Commercial District Residential. The property is shaded in orange and included in the map in your packets and the map that's also on the screen at this moment. It's adjacent to the city's mulching facility along the south side, which is Zoned Heavy Industrial District HI. The properties to the north or northwest are an unincorporated area of Rutherford County and are zoned R15 for residential purposes. This property was annexed and zoned OG simultaneously with the annexation in 2005. Since that time, the applicant, Mr. Howard Spain, has not found a good use for the property under the OG zone, so he's made an application to have that zone changed to Highway Commercial District. Property is located near to the intersection of Northwest Broad Street and Florence Road, just southwest of the railroad tracks. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this zoning change from OG to CH unanimously. I think that the applicants here this evening, if you have questions, otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before making your decision on whether to zone this property or not.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Ely, concerning this property before we open the public hearing? Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, we will open the public hearing. We'll ask anyone here wishing to speak for or against this, please come to the podium and give us your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Next, we'll consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance to rezone an area along Alexandria Drive and Florence Road to Highway Commercial CH District.
Vice Mayor, forgive me. I failed to ask Ms. Ely a question while she's up. I hate to run her back up here.
That's fine.
But I thought there might be. Ms. Ely, there is two lots directly behind this location that I understand are single-family residences. Would you explain to me the screening and to protect those residences?
Sure. Under the OG zone, there's a 10-foot buffer that's required, but if you do change the zoning to CH, then a 15-foot wide type D buffer would be required, and that buffer would be a landscape buffer. The applicants may also use a fence, and I think that when Planning Commission reviews the site plan, that typically that's a requirement that we place on any type of development there to make sure that headlights don't go into the adjacent property's backyards. So in addition to the landscaping and the distance of 15 feet, I think that it's typical for Planning Commission to also require a fence, and that's what we call a buffer. So that's what we would require between the residential property and this property. No buffer would be required between the mulching facility and this property.
And the applicant fully understands this?
He does.
Thank you very much. And that would be addressed again at the site plan review, is that correct?
By Planning Commission, that's right, sir.
Right. Okay. Are there any other questions while Ms. Ely is at the podium? If not, I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, pursuant to Resolution 12-OZ-R-03, adopted by the City Council on January the 12th, 2012, we are to conduct a public hearing to consider amending the planned signage overlay PSO District located west of Medical Center Parkway, Cousins Faison is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January the 22nd, 2012 issue of the local newspaper. Welcome again, Ms. Ely.
Thank you again, Vice Mayor. Our next item this evening is to consider amending the PSO zoning for the property that we know as the avenues. The property is currently zoned CH, which is Highway Commercial District, and is within two overlay districts, one being the Gateway Design Overlay District, and the second is the PSO, which is a planned signage overlay district. The PSO was created in the last several years so that large projects that are different can come up with a zoning package, which will regulate their zoning, and those specifics that are in the zoning package will become the requirements for any signage that will be located in the development rather than our sign ordinance. So if there's a change that the applicant wants to make to the type of signage that's permitted, they must go through the legislative process of changing or amending the zone, which is what, just before you today, a request to amend the PSO overlay district. The Gateway Design Overlay District and the CH zone, which is the base zoning, are not being considered to be changed. The applicant has been approached, or the avenues have been approached by a restaurant who wants to utilize a sign that they're calling a vertical sign, and the vertical sign would project from the face of the building, and under the current PSO, that's not permitted. And I've included in your packages the changes that they're requesting to make. If approved as requested, then there will be no more than 10 of these vertical signs allowed throughout the entire development, and then those signs will need to be separated by a minimum distance of 200 feet between the building frontage or by a parking field or drive aisle. So the distance between signs must be a minimum of 250 feet, either measured along the face of buildings or across drive aisles or parking lots. Included in your general packets are also the design requirements for those signs, and if you have any questions about those, either myself or Mrs. Kerr would be glad to answer them. But before you consider changing or amending this PSO overlay district, you should conduct a public hearing. If you have any questions now, either myself or Ms. Kerr would like to answer them, or if you want to wait after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Are there any questions, Ms. Ely, about this before we open the public hearing? Thank you. I don't see anyone. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone here wishing to speak for or against this issue, please come to the podium and give us your name and address. CNO1, I'll close the public hearing. We are to consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance to amend the planned signage overlay PSO District located west of Medical Center Parkway. Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, we are to consider recommendations of the Planning Commission. Welcome, Mr. Adelot.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor Bratcher. During its regular meeting on February 1st of 2012, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider a zone application to change approximately .34 acres from RS 10 to RM 12 along Bradieville Pike. The Planning Commission has conducted a public hearing, and it recommends approval. The council is recommended to schedule a public hearing on this matter.
Ms. McGann, do you have a date you would recommend?
I would suggest March 15th.
Is that everyone scheduled, March 15th?
May we set a public hearing on March 15th?
Second. Finally got a motion and a second. March 15th.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Is a mandatory referral. During the planning phase for the roadway improvements to realign Fortress Boulevard, Gresham Lane, and Manson Pike, the various property owners worked closely with the city, and they were agreeable to dedicating the necessary right-of-ways and easements at no cost to the city for the project. This represented a major contribution towards the project, and I might add that this project is now open, and I think it's done a very good job towards accomplishing the traffic and transportation goals. We thought it would. It was discussed at the time with the property owners that as a result of the realignment, there would be significant excess right-of-way for which the city would have no use and which would be available to deed back to the adjacent property owners. With the completion of the roadway improvements, it is appropriate for the city to move forward with formal abandonment of the old and unneeded right-of-way that is within the city to control. On February 1st of 2012, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider the abandonment. After the public hearing, the council, excuse me, the Planning Commission unanimously approved the abandonment, subject to the following conditions. One, retention of easements for any public utilities such as water, sewer, electric, or communication facilities that exist, and subject to the affected property owners providing to the city the meets and bounds descriptions for the quitclaim deeds, which need to be prepared by the city's legal department. It is recommended that the City Council concurrently approve the right-of-way abandonment, subject to the same conditions as the Planning Commission, and authorize the mayor to sign necessary legal instruments prepared by the city's legal department. No public hearing is required. I will add again that the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing, and the Planning Commission has stated this and unanimously recommends the approval.
Are there any questions, Mr. Adelot, concerning these items that he just described? That intersection is working great. I think it's been a great addition to help traffic in that areas. Council members, whatever, what are your wishes?
Move for approval.
Second. A motion and a second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Adelot. Next, we are to consider recommendations of a human resources director with regards to prescription drug payment caps. Welcome, Mr. Godwin.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the Murfreesboro City Council. This evening, in your packet, you'll have for consideration a memorandum as well as an attachment from the city's health benefits consultant, Cheryl Morgan, and this is presented to you tonight as a result of a finalization of our summary plan description documents that's taken many months to complete between the human resources and legal departments. You'll note in your packet that the recommendation has to do with a new suggestion or new recommendation in terms of a prescription drug limitation, and I might point out that the recommendation was researched by Cheryl Morgan, and in the book of business that Cheryl Morgan has in its public sector, approximately 50 percent of their clients have already implemented such plan limits with respect to pharmacy or prescription drugs. That list will likely grow at the beginning of this year, or this fiscal year. In the course of the process of reviewing this recommendation, you'll note in this memorandum from Cheryl Morgan that there are a couple of different methods for addressing this issue, and it deals primarily with the proliferation of specialty drugs or specialty prescriptions. One of the suggestions that was reviewed was a co-pay percentage that might be shared by the member, or in this case, by the employee, and realizing that some of these specialty medications can run upwards of $1 million, this was not a feasible recommendation to propose. To that end, Cheryl Morgan has suggested that a cap or a limitation of $12,000 be placed on a 30-day prescription drug, a 90-day prescription limitation of $24,000, and finally, a outpatient injectable medication limit of $4,000 per medication per visit. Importantly, I will point out that a lot of research has been done prior to coming to you this evening on the potential impact of any employee or their family members, and the best news to present to you is that there is no impact, current employees or their dependents. These limits are such and set at a high enough amount that there would be no impact to our employees or the dependents. What we have asked also in terms of a bit of additional information from our pharmacy benefits manager in Vision RX is the likelihood that these costs might be reached or incurred. It is a possibility, but it would be possible in rare circumstances, and in the example that our consultant pointed out of the $1.8 million prescription drug, this was issued for a rare genetic blood disorder. Since the city is self-funded with respect to its claims and claims dollars, we would ask that you authorize these changes to the plans and that they become incorporated into the city's master contract.
Are there any questions, Mr. Godwin? Mr. Godwin, has this ever occurred in the past? Has anyone ever reached this limit, or has this been an issue that we've had, or is it?
From the research that I have been able to do, essentially, the proliferation of a specialty drug has not been presented to the city in these circumstances. There have been cases where the stop-loss limits have been exceeded, and for example, the city has $125,000 specific aggregate stop-loss deductible, and that means if there's a claim over that amount of money, the stop-loss carrier would fulfill their obligation. But what we note from these types of specialty drug limitations is there have been no experiences like this with the city, but when I spoke with Cheryl Morgan about the implications of the stop-loss carrier fulfilling their obligation, essentially, the consultant returned the answer that the first year the stop-loss carrier would pay for a claim like that, but in the second year of such a claim, there would be a laser, which is oftentimes referred to as a high individual specific deductible, and the claim would not be paid. So there is no history with these types of limitations or these high-dollar amounts, Vice Mayor, with respect to these type of specialty drugs.
Any other questions?
What troubles me is that the 90-day is basically the equivalent of what would otherwise be 230-day periods. Can you explain to me the logic in coming up with why the 90-day cap number is what it is?
I think that, of course, given the fact that a lot of prescriptions that are specialty drugs are written on a 30, 60, 90-day period, this was a likely number to use, looking at the current claims dollars in those specialty drug medications that are being used by members. So there really isn't a logic other than that's where these typically, these medications are. These limits are being recommended sufficiently above the usage rate right now, and that was confirmed both by Cheryl Morgan and by our pharmacy benefits manager.
And that cap as any one prescription, that's not a cumulative effect of, if someone's on a number of medications, it's not a cumulative cap, is it? It's a per-medication?
That is correct. That's an excellent question, and not only is it not a cumulative amount because of healthcare reform, council may recall that when we updated the summary plan description, healthcare reform has required that there be no lifetime maximums for members. So while we're also in compliance with healthcare reform, this is not a cumulative amount. So it is possible, but not probable, I guess I should say, that someone would have multiple $12,000 prescriptions written in a particular month, but the plan would pay that.
But if they did, they would all be covered, each one individually would be covered up to $12,000. So you had five of them, there's $60,000 worth of benefits in a month.
Yes, that's correct.
To be paid. Okay.
How long is this agreement for? One year?
Yes, and since the contract renews July the 1st, if the experience occurs to us that this limit is not correct between now and the revision of the contract date, it could also be renewed prior to that time, but yes, it is for a year.
Mayor and council, with our self-funded plan, one of the things we need to do is make sure our plan still provides excellent benefits, but because we're self-funded, we also need to be able to establish some boundaries and some parameters so that there is a fair balance there, and with Mr. Godwin's work with our pharmacy manager and Cheryl Morgan, we tried to set this limit high enough above what we see any of our current employees experiencing, but again, to set that outer boundary to help us manage our costs in the long run. We don't see an impact to any existing city employee. We've left room in between there, but at the end of the day, there could be another medication that comes down the road that can help us manage our healthcare costs.
But on an annual basis, if we were to see that this was not, due to prescription cost was not sufficient, then that can be revisited.
That's correct. It could be.
At the end of that one year time. Okay. As long as we have that ability with that, then I would move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions before we call the row? Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, we are to consider for recommendations from the city manager with regards to authorization to implement policy change for non-exempt certified police officer meal times. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bratcher, members of city council. This council has long been committed to providing the city with excellent law enforcement protection. Safe neighborhoods is one of the city's four major budget goals. The city has dedicated substantial resources to hiring, training, and equipping our police department for excellence. You have recognized the critical and unique role these public servants hold. For many years, we have strived to exemplify modern, proactive, and competitive police operations. I'm requesting your approval tonight to take another step to bring us in line with the best practices of other municipalities. Police officers often say that they are always on duty because they feel a special responsibility to others. It is certainly true, especially when they're in uniform, that others look to them for assistance. This may take the form of the help of a lost motorist asking for directions or a crime victim requesting protection from her assailant. Whether it is simple information or backing up a fellow officer, a police officer must always be ready to respond. We also expect our officers to always be on the lookout for criminal activity and to use their training to identify a hazard before others do. Unfortunately, it's not just our good citizens who are aware of a police presence. Criminals know that the presence of an officer poses the greatest threat to them. Tragically, the on-duty deaths of law enforcement officers increased nationwide 25 percent in 2010 and 13 percent during the first half of 2011, according to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. I think we can all agree that our police officers have different responsibilities and job risks than other city employees. Due to these differences, our officers do not always have the ability to have and enjoy a mealtime on duty in the same way that other city employees can and do. Most non-exempt certified police officers are scheduled for a 45-minute meal period during their shift rather than the hour that most city employees enjoy. We limit how many of them can congregate at a restaurant at one time. We require them to be reachable by the phone at all times. Interruption of mealtimes by citizens, questions, or calls from coworkers or supervisors appear to be significantly greater for law enforcement personnel than any other group of city employees. The city has previously tried to address this issue by providing a process for officers who are interrupted during their meal break or who are unable to take a meal break due to work demand to be paid for such mealtime loss. The city has also sought to reemphasize through policy changes the importance of allowing each officer to take a full uninterrupted meal break. While is noted above, there is a process in place for officers to report interruptions to their meal period so that they can be paid at that time. The line between providing a quick answer to a question raised by a citizen and an interruption that should be reported as work time is often hard to determine. Our officers want to be responsive to our citizens at all times, and we believe this change will support that goal. I'd like to have Chief Chrisman come and speak to some survey work that was done of other police departments at this time.
Welcome, Mr. Chief Chrisman.
Mr. Vice Mayor, good evening and members of our council. This issue is not unique to Murfreesboro. It appears to be inherent in the nature of modern policing, particularly in municipalities. The majority of our peers have addressed this issue by paying their officers for their mealtimes. Human Resources, in fact, has confirmed that while there are local variations in the approach, the communities of Nashville, Chattanooga, Oak Ridge, Gallatin, Johnson City, Mount Juliet, and Springfield all pay their officers for their meal periods. In addition, the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office and the Smyrna and Laverne Police Departments provide compensated mealtimes. Recently, I appeared before you to provide a statistical summary of the Part 1 crime data reported to Murfreesboro Police for 2011. As I know you are aware, our officers are working hard every day to ensure the safety and security of our citizens and visitors. Although crowds for service reached an all-time high in 2011, overall violent crime was down. Proactive traffic enforcement and automated red light enforcement reduced deaths and increased the safety of our roadways. Our officers and detectives initiated over 9,500 criminal charges for violators. You have directed that safe and livable neighborhoods is the number-one priority for our city. Our officers and the entire police department are committed to that goal with you. Our officers are the finest anywhere, and they do an outstanding job for our city every day. As we embrace the future opportunities for our city, our department and its members will continue to raise the bar of excellence in public safety. As we speak, work is underway to achieve state accreditation. Criminal investigators are preparing to move into new facilities. Plans are progressing to host a premier law enforcement executive development training course later this year. We're working with the city manager to plan for capital improvement needs. Our law enforcement partnerships are stronger than ever, and for the first time, our city will host the annual conference of the Tennessee Chiefs of Police in 2012. It's because of the strong support from generations of mayors, councils, and city managers that our department has long enjoyed a reputation for excellence and best practices. I am confident that this proposed mealtime policy change represents a best practice improvement, which will benefit our department and its non-exempt certified police officers and make us more competitive. and make us more competitive with other municipalities. I also believe this change represents good public policy because safe and livable neighborhoods are our number-one priority collectively. And as we continue to grow and the demands of our officers increase, we must continually strive to recruit and retain the very best police officers available. I thank you in advance for your consideration and support of this recommendation. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. After I received office complaints about this issue earlier...well, last year, I had these concerns investigated. And as a result of those concerns and the benchmarking we did with other law enforcement agencies in Tennessee, then I bring this recommendation to you. And I've concluded that a change in city policy will better serve our police officers and our city. Now let me speak to the mealtime policy. Specifically, I propose that every non-exempt certified officer of the Murfreesboro Police Department who is at work for at least four hours should receive extra compensation for a mealtime period for that day. If an officer does not work at least four hours or receives a day's pay for vacation, sick, compensatory time, or worker's compensation, or is decommissioned, the officer would not be paid mealtime for that day. Because the vast majority of our officers are scheduled for 45-minute lunch breaks, my proposal at this time is that all non-exempt officers receive a 45-minute mealtime. If the city changes its scheduling of officers in the future, the length of the meal times could also change. This extra compensation or other pay would be paid at the officer's regular budgeted salary rate. It would not be a salary supplement as designated in Section 5003 of the Employee Handbook. Since an officer's mealtime would change from an unpaid period for the benefit of the officer to a paid period for the benefit of the city, officers will no longer have to keep track of interruptions during the 45-minute meal period or missed meal periods. Since the mealtime will be considered as time worked, the mealtime will be counted when calculating the number of hours worked by each officer in a tour of duty. You will recall that Murfreesboro Police employees work 21-day tours of duty rather than a work week. This proposal would not result in any change in the length of a tour of duty, the number of hours worked scheduled, or the timing of existing shifts. This proposal for extra compensation is to be paid for meal times will not change an officer's regular rate of pay or overtime rate. It is not a salary or step increase in pay. As proposed, it will not change an officer's compensation for pension or retirement calculations since those calculations are based on the regular pay and do not include extra or other pay amounts. Should you approve my proposal, I anticipate bringing amendments to the pension plan and the retirement program documents to make this intention and understanding explicit and beyond doubt. Let me speak very quickly to the fiscal impact. This change is not reflected in our current budget. The estimated cost of this policy change would be $400,000 for the remainder of the year. But I believe the unforeseen expense that will be required for the use of funds for the mealtime payments and additional overtime expense can be handled within that unforeseen contingency line item and/or police department expenditure savings. As a result, you know, there won't need to be any supplemental funding from the council for this policy change. I believe it to be sufficiently necessary and important change that this expense should be incurred. In future budget years, it will be shown as a dedicated line item in the same way overtime is separately budgeted. Therefore, it is recommended that the mealtime policy as outlined above be adopted. I'm making this recommendation to you because I believe it is the best approach, given the realities of modern policing. I'm also recommending that you allow staff to implement this change with the beginning of the next tour of duty for officers on February 19th. We should not wait to treat our officers in the same fashion as our peers if we believe it's the right approach. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Thank you, Chief Christman, for your comments as well. Are there any questions to Mr. Lyons or any comments from the council?
I might point out, I know Mayor Bragg had to be out of town. I did speak to him about this proposal, and he was in support and agreement.
Right.
Vice Mayor, if there are no questions or comments, then I would move that we approve the recommendation of the city manager.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I think we all agree that we have finest police department in Tennessee, if not the South, so...Colorado Ms. Rock?
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and Mr. Lyons. Thank you both. Next, we'll consider for recommendations of Assistant City Manager with regards to Fast Track Infrastructure Development Program grant for the proposed Amazon facility. Welcome, Mr. Crumley.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This may seem like deja vu. This will be the eighth item that you've approved in the string dating back to last October concerning Amazon and its location on Joby Jackson Parkway. This is the contract between the city and the state of Tennessee's Department of Economic and Community Development for $3.5 million of infrastructure grant funds being used to prepare that site for Amazon. It is typical to the other industrial development grants that we've received from the state in the past. We recommend your approval of it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Any questions? Starting this grant.
I move we approve the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Colorado Ms. Rock?
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and Mr. Lyons. Thank you both. Next, we'll consider for recommendations of Assistant City Manager with regards to Fast Track Infrastructure Development Program grant for the proposed Amazon facility. Welcome, Mr. Crumley.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This may seem like deja vu. This will be the eighth item that you've approved in the string dating back to last October concerning Amazon and its location on Joby Jackson Parkway. This is the contract between the city and the state of Tennessee's Department of Economic and Community Development for $3.5 million of infrastructure grant funds being used to prepare that site for Amazon. It is typical to the other industrial development grants that we've received from the state in the past. We recommend your approval of it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Any questions? Starting this grant.
I move we approve the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Colorado Ms. Rock?
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and Mr. Lyons. Thank you both. Next, we'll consider for recommendations of Assistant City Manager with regards to Fast Track Infrastructure Development Program grant for the proposed Amazon facility. Welcome, Mr. Crumley.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This may seem like deja vu. This will be the eighth item that you've approved in the string dating back to last October concerning Amazon and its location on Joby Jackson Parkway. This is the contract between the city and the state of Tennessee's Department of Economic and Community Development for $3.5 million of infrastructure grant funds being used to prepare that site for Amazon. It is typical to the other industrial development grants that we've received from the state in the past. We recommend your approval of it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Any questions? Starting this grant.
No questions, Vice Mayor. I move we approve the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Colorado Ms. Rock?
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Well, next, we're to consider recommendations of Assistant City Manager with...to approve Resolution 12-R-01 to fund the expansion and renovation of Hobgood Elementary School.
Yes, Vice Mayor, members of council. We do have a refunding resolution for you to consider. But as you know, I like teamwork and would like to call on Dr. Gilbert to assist me in the presentation of this item.
Welcome to our school superintendent, Dr. Gilbert.
You are a brave soul. Thank you very much, and thank you for having me, and thank you for your support of Murfreesboro City Schools. While I'm here, let me do a little bit of cheerleading. I can't tell you how proud I am of our teachers and our administrators, of the growth that they have made the last two years as far as their learning and the learning of our students. So thank you very much for your support, because we could not do that without you. Hobgood Elementary was constructed in 1955. It currently has about 52,000 square feet. The last major renovation was in 1975. There are 23 academic classrooms there. Currently, we are using every available space. In fact, one of our third grade...we have a teacher that is shared between two classrooms because we simply ran out of classroom space and we had more children than we could accommodate. We have our art room and our music room are now both in very small rooms that are attached to the cafeteria. At our last visit by the state, they recommended that we do install a new kitchen. So what we are recommending is that we expand Hobgood by four classrooms and a teacher work area. That school does not have a teacher work area. We're also recommending that we...or requesting that we be able to expand the school's cafeteria area and build a new kitchen area, that we construct a new administrative and media center wing, and convert the current media center into two classrooms, and that we replace the current wall-mounted HVAC units in the existing building...and wait till you hear this, I know what this means...to variable refrigerant flow, which will save us some money and give us some windows, which will be nice. There is one correction. If you approve this, this will increase the building to 71,462 square feet, and then we will have a total of 29 academic classrooms plus music and art. So those are our needs at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Are there any questions to Dr. Gilbert?
Not a question, Vice Mayor. But while we have Dr. Gilbert here, I'd just like to say, as a parent of two children in the city school system, I want to thank you for the great job that you and the system and the teachers all do.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Ms. Gilly.
Should I admit that I was there when it was built?
He's probably the reason it was built.
Vice Mayor, members of council, we're currently putting together the city's capital improvement plan. Chief Christman just alluded to that fact. This project will be in the CIP, and based on the other projects that have come to me from the other department heads, this project would be in year one. However, if we wait for the CIP process and your workshop and your review and the borrowing to occur, we'll miss the opportunity to get this complete in time for the next school year. It's the reason why we bring it to you now, so that we can get this project moving. The project...the initial expenses would be paid from reserves, and at the time, we would borrow money in the summer or fall, those reserves would be repaid from the borrowing that would occur. The total amount is $5,070,884, and we would request your approval of Resolution 12-R-01.
All right, council members, what are your wishes?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Colorado Ms. Rock?
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Yoki. All right, council members, next, we'll consider for adoption Resolution 12-R-01 expressing official intent to reimburse from notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued in occurrence by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee for certain expenditures in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for the addition...for the new addition and renovations at Hobgood Elementary School.
That's what we just did.
Is it? I thought we just...okay, I thought that was a payback measure, but okay, we've done that. We may add some more onto that school then. Next, we'll consider for adoption Resolution 12-R-02 requesting unclaimed balances of accounts remitted to State Treasurer under Unclaimed Property Act.
This is something we do annually. Every year, we turn monies over to the state for unclaimed properties, such as checks that never got cashed, and after 18 months, we can request that money back. So every year, we turn money in, and every year, we get older funds back if they have not already been claimed by someone that they actually belong to. We do commit that if they come to us eventually with that uncashed check and want to make the funds good, we will do that. But we would prefer that the money stay in our treasury as opposed to the state's. So we would like to have this approved.
If either that money belongs to me, would you let me know?
Yes, sir.
All right, you've heard the recommendation of our city...what are your wishes?
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Colorado Ms. Rock?
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Next, we're to consider any beer permit applications.
We have one tonight. It has not finished codes yet, but it should be imminent. It is our first wholesale beer distributor, as far as I know, in Murfreesboro. We were waiting for the wholesale liquor side of it to pass because they are planning to sell some beers that are of the content that can be sold in liquor stores, and he didn't want to do one without the other. So now that that has passed on third reading, I'm presenting to you the wholesale beer side, and it's for 730A Middle Tennessee Boulevard.
That was placed on your desk tonight, I believe.
Yes, yes, sir, it was. I was hoping to get the codes before we met, but I didn't get it yet.